Move to the budget workshop.
So do you want the budget?
Yeah, he asked me that.
So I'll just invite the administrators up to the table since it's a workshop format, and just explain to the viewing public that a workshop format is designed to provide the board with additional information related to the 2020-21 budget. No actions will be taken. We will take board questions. We'll try to provide them the information that they need. If we don't have the answers to a board question, we research it and have it for them at the next meeting. So the most important difference between the regular meeting that you just viewed and this is the board is now out of session and in conversation with the administration around the 2021 budget. So one piece of information I'd like to point out to the board right away is that there has been a change in this sheet, and I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of it. When Sue ran the numbers with the bond bank, they increased the first year payment for the bond to $625,000. When we get into the capital account priorities, we made an adjustment there, but we kept the 3.5% overall board goal solvent. So we made the adjustment in the capital account. So if that didn't stand out to you in the in the package, we just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Can we just go over that one? Because I quickly, I was, this one I was starting to look at. So you're the 502, 395 out of the facilities, you're actually putting that in the bond, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then so the 625, which is also in blue, which you're pulling up, that's the bond warrant. Are you, so you're using the bond to pay the, to pay the facilities? I mean, how do you, how does that blow out?
Using the facilities to pay the bond payment.
Okay.
Just the opposite.
Right, and we, and then we.
Good, Denise.
And then you included in our board backup what would be cut from the facilities as a result of that. So that was in our board backup under, it was number seven.
So Denise is pointing out, you have another artifact in your, in your folder. The question the board asked at the last meeting is exactly how we would adjust our capital priorities to reflect the bond payment. And you can see that Jim and Sue and I met, and the delay column equals the 625 that the bond payment would be. And then the second column over is the priorities that Jim felt should be the things that we pay attention to in this upcoming school year with concurrence from Sue and I. Do you want Jim to go through that? Take a few minutes, Jim, to talk about what you are suggesting we delay and why you chose those items as opposed to others on the list.
I'm sure. Thank you very much. We chose to, to go forward with obviously the parking lot for the tennis courts as a direct correlation of what's happening for the new middle school, that that was a need. The AC replacements for the, for the server rooms, I believe, is at critical state, and we all love our technology, so for that to go down would be much more impact on the educational environment. We chose to delay the, some of the security improvements, and what would that really mean would be more cameras and some additions to our camera software and server space. We just, we have made tremendous efforts over the past couple of years with sinking money into that and improving that system. I'm thinking to delay that another year is not too much harm. Mohairat roof, I believe, is still critical. With the engineering that we would like to delay, this is going to obviously bump out all these projects for another year. So in the original capital plan, we had air handling replacements over at Mastway and Mohairat for the following year, the 21-22, but we would bring some of these projects down and probably curtail those for another year. So that was the reasoning for pushing out the mechanical engineering. With the Mohairat, I would be sad to see that renovation of the existing main office be delayed. However, I collectively, I, we're still using the spaces effectively as we can right now. Even though it's inconvenient, it could still work for another year. So though that may be a disagreement of some, I, I, we feel that that's, that's something that we could delay. So I, I know there was some comment about the grandstands that is still vitally important. I also have a letter from, from Andy Lathrop about the future possibility of the NHIAA hosting tournaments, or hosting meets, I should say, and giving our district a little bit more visibility on the athletic side. If we did have spectators, or a place for spectators, and also a viewing platform for recording. The junior wall construction, we believe, is still critical as well. The cracked flooring on the second floor, we broke that out a little bit because in the budget presentation originally, the $40,000 I carried for that second floor replacement included those two classroom areas that we wanted to build. So the, the classroom, the two classrooms for the $75,000 did not include new flooring in those spaces, and the 13 will, will take care of that new space to make, make both of those rooms complete. The air handling, the AC for the cafeteria, again, that was tough as well because that does provide relief, but since it's only really seasonally limited, we felt we could go another year without. So in the, the grand scheme of things, like Dr. Morris said, that, that gave us almost exactly 625. And again, I know it's not, the whole plan is not here, but these projects, like in the past, anything that we didn't do or, or delayed for a year got moved to the next year. So again, this is, the capital plan is a living document. We move things in and around different years as necessary. There's, there's new stuff that gets added, so we felt this was the best scenario going into, to meet our budget goal.
Questions for Jim?
So.
Denise?
So my question is that, again, I, I see how all this is necessary in order to, for that $625,000 to be there in the warrant as the interest payment. My concern is that if the warrant does not pass, that 625 is gone because it wasn't in our operating budget. It was in this warrant that didn't pass, and so then we're going to start. So all these projects are deferred, but assuming that we would then try and come back for the following year with the bond again, we would once again have to delay, you see what I'm saying, right? Is that we would once again have to find probably even more than $625,000 in order to make that work.
Right.
So that these projects that are now being deferred would then probably have to be deferred even again.
Or you'd have to.
Am I following right? What's that?
Or you would have to reprioritize.
Right, but one way or another, you'd still, you'd still be basically in, in that same situation, sitting here a year from now. Now, I hope the bond, you know, if the bond passes, then we're good to go. We know, if the bond passes, then we know, okay, this is the amount of money, this is what we have every year for our interest payment, or, you know, our bond payment, what have you, and we can obviously move forward with that knowledge. But not knowing for sure that the bond passes, I'm just super, super concerned about cutting that much out of our operating budget. And, you know, kind of sitting here a year from now and then being like, oh my gosh, you know, how we even, even, I mean, then you're looking at probably even more cuts. And that's a huge concern.
If I could just add, for just the sake of clarity, the traditional sheets that you've received from Sue are part of your packet, adjusted for the $625,000 bond payment. But Denise asked if we would produce parallel sheets that would reflect her concern around the capital account. And so the orange sheets reflect her question as to what would be the, the impact if we did something different related to the capital account, meaning keeping some part of it. And so that's, that's produced for you to, to review as well because it goes along with Denise's concern.
So let me get, I missed a meeting, so you may have discussed this, but worst case scenario, the bond doesn't pass. You know, you carry the budget forward, and we would still have 1.973 in the next budget as the base of the budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, would that put you in a, what kind of hole, Jim, what kind of hole would that put you in? Or is that, does that create a, a major problem for you in terms of capital improvement? The fact that you'd have, you know, that if next year you'd have 1.9? Can you understand my question?
I agree, yeah.
I mean, would that mean like major deferred maintenance? Would that mean, you know, a problem in moving forward?
Well, it's hard to say that. I would say no. The major adjustments would have to be an already agreed upon strategic plan, which a lot of these things are in. So with your permission, we can, we can change that around. I gotta say, the, the most thing that I'm pretty much worried about that in the next three years is just some of the air handling replacements to be done at Mohairat and Mastway. I mean, it's, fresh air is vital to students in that school. Those are the, the items that are at the end of life and already beyond life expectancy. And I'm really concerned about that. But again, we've, we've already delayed those a couple of times, and we're limping along as they say.
We talked about the middle school, Jim?
No, the, the Mohairat and Mastway.
Ah, okay.
Again, the, but again, Dr. Morris raises a great concern, is like, that's just another year we're deferring stuff over at the middle school, which no, none of these projects in the 10-year plan deal with the middle school at all, at all.
And so that raises, I think, a concern that I think Denise is raising, is we've decided to forego the middle school with the hopeful assumption that we're going to get a bond passed. But at some point, it, you know, I think we need to plan, and maybe Tom used the language, that worst case scenario, or Denise used it. Eventually, we're going to have to put, be putting money into the middle school as well, and we don't have anything accounted for that as well. So I, I'm concerned as Denise is. We as a board have, you know, with, with all of you, have really tried to put our CIP back on track because it was woefully off track. And I'm worried that we're setting ourselves up now for getting deep into a hole again that's going to be hard to climb out of.
I think the only conversation that we had at the table, and that privately was Sue and Dr. Morris, would be just using some of the reserve funds for emergency fund. That's why we have emergency, you know, emergency fund for those things. And again, I can't speak for that, but using revenue.
Again, I'll take a shot at it, Kenny. I'm absolutely not diminishing Denise's concern whatsoever. However, there, in the next several years, not just this one, the board is going to be in a position to make really hard decisions around the capital, around the trust funds, and about how much we want to raise in taxation in order to stay true to the 3.5% goal that we've made. And when you look at one of the options Sue's created, she's actually recommending, and I support wholeheartedly, borrowing from our trust fund, $150,000 to make up for the Medicaid loss that we're experiencing in this upcoming year. We are hopeful that the plan that we have around Medicaid will actually produce more than what we're anticipating, but we can't go there yet. We have to figure out whether it's going to work. The, so there's, there's three tools in the school, school board's toolbox right now related to making sure we can stay true to the 3.5% goal. One is the capital account. You can see that we're addressing that tool tonight. The other is the trust fund. It has $1.2 million in it. We built that up purposefully so that we would be in a position, like the town does, of borrowing from itself and repaying itself. And the third is how much we feel comfortable raising in taxation. So when you look at that five-year plan, and we'll come back to that, it's not of immediate concern, but we'll come back to it, and we're talking about how we make sure we're true to our word, we'll have to be using all three of these tools, especially in the next three school years. In the fourth school year, we actually cut a break with the bond because we're, the high school bond freeze up. But for these next three budgets, we're going to have to be meticulous in our perseverance in trying to maintain this level of, of expenditure growth and budgetary growth. And I personally believe we can do it, but the concern that Denise is raising is exactly the right concern. We're going to be manipulating three different accounts overtly in front of the public in order to make sure that we don't overwhelm them with taxation in relation to the middle school. So the struggle that Denise is ha, is having is the same struggle that Jim and Sue and I had as we tried to adjust, but we're going to go through this at least three more times in the next three years in order to make this whole thing work. Does that all make sense?
Well, I mean, again, if you look at option one, it's the best way to do it because option one, you're not adding any money in. So that's, that's gives you the true impact, which is 4.14%. So there's literally a quarter of a million dollar hole you're trying to fill with the interest payment and with the money that you're withdrawing from the trust funds. So my concern, of course, and this is like, talk about like worrying ahead of, it's not this, this is the 2021 budget. The 21-22 budget, we're not going to have the $100,000 interest, and then we're gonna, we're still going to have this likely, if we're adding 500,000, we're still going to have about a quarter of a million dollar hole that we're going to have to fill somehow.
Well, we should, and if the bond passes, we'll have more than $100,000 of interest, probably much more. So we'll be able to backfill that from the interest. That's how we pay ourselves back each year. So Sue and I have anticipated that in this five-year plan.
It's just going to be, it's going to be.
It's going to be hard.
It's going to be really tight.
Yeah, but we can do it. It's just a matter of saying we're going to do it and understanding that this sacrifices as we go through these, especially these next three school years. The bond passes, so this year it's 625,000. The following year, it's 1.2 or 4, Sue?
Just three years.
So, you know, this is the.
1.4.
What we're doing right now is exactly what we'll do for the next three years. We'll, we'll be shuffling things around to make sure that we can keep our word, which I have been now saying for 60 different public meetings, that we're going to meet this, this goal, and, and the board has been very supportive of that. So it does mean that we make tough decisions each year. It may be that the deferment that you see, like in Jim's saying delay, some of this stuff might not come back up for air until 2023 is what, you know, when he's saying delay, it's not necessarily it's delayed to next year, it might be delayed for three years. And we'll do that same thing next year, and the same thing the year after. So basically, those three tools are the tools that you'll have to make sure that you can make the bond payment without crushing the taxpayer.
Okay.
And they are available each year.
Okay.
Just maybe a finer detail. Jim, you mentioned like the high school cafeteria is seasonal.
I know.
My bent really is a grandstand, viewing stands on athletic fields. That's very seasonal as well, and I look at that as almost a perk, more of a luxury. And, you know, it's great, we, you know, we have this field, I'd love a grandstand, but I kind of feel there's, you know, you mentioned your concerns about some of the air handling at Mastway, Mohairat, and I, I for one would love to take out the grandstand and either have that money to support our budget, or have that money go to things that are really much more the guts of our school rather than a luxury for athletics and parents watching their kids play. But that's just my bent on it.
So Ken, can I just add another thought into this? Remember that Sue gives you monthly reports on the budget starting in usually October, November, and then she's monitoring that budget for you every single month. And by the time we hit May, we'll know where we are positionally in the budget. And so it may very well be that when we hit that point, there's money in the budget to do something that we're not anticipating doing on the front end, and we always come back to you guys and talk about it. For example, one of the things we'd want to do is pay ourselves back. I mean, that's, that's priority, but if there's another $100,000 that we can predict would become part of the fund balance, then we always come back to you guys and say, what do you think about us doing this project this year? So it is possible, as, as we maintain the budget, Sue does a really great job of monitoring it, and at any given point, we may end up with more or less, depending on how the year goes. This year is going to be tight. It's not going to be as generous as other years. But in, like last year, we, if we use last year as an example, we had 700,000, give or take, left at the end of the year, and we chose to put all 700,000 toward the towns because we were concerned about the town of Lee's tax impact. We committed to 350,000, so we decided to take 350, which we committed to, plus the 350 that we saw as a balance, and, and put it towards taxes. Another decision the board could have made is the 350 that we committed and then use the other 350 to put into the trust fund or to do a capital project that we didn't think we were able to, we're going to be able to do. So in, I know I'm being very long-winded, but what I'm saying is, as we move through the budget, we recognize whether we have flexibility or not by May, and that could help in terms of the question you raised.
Yeah, no, it's more, I mean, priorities, of course, we all rank things differently, and we all have different values, and I'm just saying that's low on my.
Sure. And remember, this capital plan is yours in the end, so if the six of you decide that the grandstand should be out and the ventilator should be in, this is our recommendation to you. It's, it's in the end what you guys want us to do.
And I think it helps with Denise's point because we're only seeing the one year, and if we saw the impact on the deferrals to other years, we really get a sense of how this shifting is working. And that really is how, if you want our input on priorities, I think that's very valuable to know that, because you mentioned, Jim, because we're bumping some things out of this year, for sure that's going to be bumping things out of year two.
Right.
Into three and, and down the line. So we only, we only have just a fraction of the story there.
If I can add for a moment, the dance of the capital improvement plan, it's not only just on money and the project. There are cost savings benefits by doing similar projects at the same time.
Right.
So when we talk about HVAC, that price for the air handler cafeteria can actually come down by doing that in other years alongside other air handling units, which we want to do. So you go out to, you do a bigger bid. Thing with the grandstands is that it's so specific, and it's the same thing. We've been talking about this for like almost four years, or when we did the, the track and, and field, and it's like, it's not only an annoyance, it's a, it's a need that continues to be resurfacing every spring, summer, and fall. So three, three out of the four seasons, yes, it, it is a concern of ours. Not saying that, I'm not trying to change your mind on that. Dr. Morris is right, you will call the cards to it, but it's, this is the chess game that I play with, with the plan.
Sure.
And I, I do my very best to try to lump as many projects of similar nature together in a year, just for additional cost savings. And two, you know, we've been pretty lucky in past years with, with the grants, like we never thought about doing projects like Mastway and Mohairat, but the grant opportunities, which there may be some more in the future, just puts things higher up in the plan.
Right.
It's like you got to strike when the iron's hot. So that's my two cents.
Denise?
So I'm thinking, again, because my biggest concern is, oh my gosh, the bond doesn't pass, we've just wiped out 625,000 from our capital improvement plan and nothing to show for it. And it's good to the taxpayer because, you know, you look at the tax impact, and that's on the orange sheet, and, you know, the overall tax impact or, or the overall increase goes to 2.63 at the top. That's, but then, you know, it breaks out into the different towns, and so it's good for the taxpayer, but it's bad for us, I think, in the long run, for sure. So I guess my question is, if the worst case scenario and the bond did not pass, what, what you're saying, Dr. Morris, is that we could look at our fund balance to kind of restore some of that and do some of these projects basically out of this year's budget? Right, is that, and if I'm saying, if I'm hearing this correctly.
Yeah, we, Brian.
We could take that money and say, we're not going to give it back to the taxpayer because they're already going to get a break on next year's, but we're, we're going to keep that money and do some of this stuff on this list.
Right.
Yeah, the impact on, if the bond fails, the impact on the three towns is pretty dramatic.
Right.
You know, we'd go from 3.5 to 2.4.
Right.
And then the resulting impact is, you know, very, very good. So you're right. I mean, you would necessarily end the year, but what Sue does, and we'll need to know this on the front end, is, is you, is you look up into her revenue section, she actually predicts what she thinks the balance will be that we'll turn over to the taxpayer.
Right.
And so, yeah, following your logic, we would change that prediction, right?
Well, I mean, the 400 that's in there could be 200, that could be another revision.
Yeah.
Right.
If we have that.
Right.
So that's an opportunity there.
It just makes me a little less nervous to know that we have a mechanism to kind of restore some of that money back into the CIP, you know, now, because again, I'm assuming that we want to come back next year and try again. Hopefully, I mean, I'm hoping this will be one and done. Like, that's going to be the goal, obviously, but just to kind of plan worst case scenario.
I mean, the only cautionary tale I have about the fund balance is like, that money gets spent about 50 different ways. So there's like, I mean, I needn't go no further than the foreign language people coming in here. You're going to have an incredible competition for really, really limited resources for at least the next three years. So plans like that, when people come to us and say, want to add $100,000 for this or that, and it always is like, in the spring that comes up, if the bond fails, that's not even an option.
Right.
And even if the bond passes and we go forward, it's still probably not an option because the money is going to be extremely tight.
The only place that you'd get an option for the fifth grade is if the guaranteed maximum health insurance comes in significantly lower than 8.4%.
I had a question, Jim, just historically, the 1.973, my, my memory is that, that may be less than last year, but that's normally higher than it has been as a figure. Could you just put that kind of in perspective?
Yeah, that's off by $1,000 exactly.
From what?
From last year.
Okay.
And if I could remind the board that's been here, the board members that have been here the longest, Al and, and Uton, when we all started eight years ago, that account had $100,000 in it.
Yeah.
To do all of the work across the district. If you look at the district at that point in time, it was atrocious. And so we've done a tremendous job as a board, you know, bringing this up into, and surpassing our goal, because our goal, remember, was 1.2 million.
Yeah.
So we started moving, preparing for the bond in the current budget, and that's why we were in a position to move things around.
We were lucky, though. We had like the, I don't know if we're lucky, we tracked the students, but the Barrington tuition money has been like our lifeblood. It's allowed us to add to that. So everyone was talking about tax relief, but we've been using it to actually build up the capital account to, that makes us more stable long-term.
Yeah. I guess, I guess the point I was going to make is that I'm less concerned about this number because I think historically, that's a pretty, that's a pretty high number.
It's a solid number.
And it's a solid number so that if we have to go forward next year with that number, we're not in terrible shape because that's a, a pretty good, you know, there's certain things we would have to defer, but it seems to me that's not a draconianly low number.
It's not like bring your coat.
Yeah.
I was under the impression still that you're still going to increase the capital account 500,000 a year, so that's.
That was Mike, that, so the tricky thing is, again, not 2021, it's 21-22. That's what I was saying, is we still have to bump up 500,000, and that's, that's what I said with Jim, with the interest, I mean, that delta right now is 250,000. So somehow, we have to come up with, so look around for oil and stuff, I don't know.
Right.
Would, would the interest payments in the next year be the same as, you have two years of interest payments, is that right?
Yes.
Would it be the same? Would it be the same, would it be the same amount, or is it, is it 625?
625 and 625.
Yep.
Is there another payment beyond that?
Yeah, well, it's 625, a million, right, times two, plus 625.
Because the second year of the interest free is 2122, and then the first year of the interest free on the second bond is 2122, so it's 1.8 in that, that's the year that we will struggle, the same struggle we're having now.
Okay, I'm just starting, maybe, I'm trying to think of like the next, we're going to assume that out of that 3.5% increase, 1%, or about 625 is going to be the interest, okay?
Correct.
The next year, we're going to have to build in 1.2 million of interest?
1.8.
1.8.
Next year, we're going to build in 1.8 million of interest?
Yeah.
Okay. And plus, increase the capital improvement 500,000?
No, because what we were saying initially was that we, so this is where the confusion comes in, it's the way I articulated originally, because I didn't realize that we would have to move that money into a bond. We were increasing Jim's account 500,000 to prepare for the bond, but based on my conversations with our lawyer, it couldn't exist in Jim's budget, it had to exist as a, in the bond payment. So what you'll see is the bond payment go up, and then we'll do the same conversation around, what are we deferring in maintenance, what are we using from our trust fund, what are we asking the taxpayer for? It's the same conversation for the next three years, that's going to be the tough conversation, because we'll continue to defer for a couple of years, a number of issues that Jim had on the original plan, in order to make sure we stay true to 3.5%. By the fourth year, as Sue and I looked at it, by the fourth year, we'll have almost the entire bond payment because of the high school freeing up. And then, we can start shifting the money back towards Jim's account. So, does that make sense? Bond, 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 back to capital, back to capital. So that's, that's the dance we'll be dancing for five years. Does that, does that making sense, everybody?
Sue, what are you running that interest-only payment at?
The interest-only, I'm not, it's actually from the bond bank, it has to be at whatever that memo I sent you.
So they're going to, they're going to tell you how much it is regardless of what the carrying costs are?
Right. Yes.
So there's no wiggle room there?
No, and we used 2.75 for our projection now?
Yes, we did.
Because the last time they went out, it was 2.75, and it's either going to be 2.75 or lower, based on what's happening.
But that doesn't impact the first two ones, because they said it's 5%.
5%.
Yeah.
So, just one option we might have, I'm just thinking if the health insurance comes in lower, one option we might have is to go back to this list, right, and say, okay, let's take care of some of these, so that we don't have to take care of them in the future, that that could be, you know, as a board, we could decide that would be a priority that we want to, because there could be other competition for that money, but it seemed to me that, that.
Yes, absolutely.
Other que, so other questions, I guess we're in the CIP, questions about this?
I think the only, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, go back to Kenny's observation way at the beginning of this conversation, you know, Jim asked me whether to do all five years or just do the immediate year, I said do the immediate year, because I didn't want to confuse the 2021 budget with future budgets, but I absolutely, we absolutely can, can give you a modified five-year capital improvement plan, based on what we now know, if the bond passes, what we have to come up with. So we could do that for, for your consideration as we move forward.
Thank you.
So Denise, Wendy, did you get that, get the five years?
I had another question, I don't know if there's a cut of order we're going in, or?
No, I mean, you have all the documents now, the orange is what reflected Denise's concern, the white is where Sue was, and it's really, to stay super true, to be dead-on with, with the board, a board budget goal, it would be the white sheet in option three, and in that sheet, we're using $100,000 of bond interest, and $150,000 from the expendable trust fund to stay true to the goal, and the expendable trust fund has $1.2 million in it, so it doesn't deplete it or come close, and so if the board wants to stay true to its budget goal, then the white sheet, option three, does that. Or we have to cut some.
So, as far as this trust fund, is this a trust fund that we?
These are multiple trust funds that you've established.
Okay, so do any of them that we have to put on the ballot, like, are they, or are these all that we control, so we don't have to?
Half of them are totally at the board's control, the last one could be the board, or it could be the commissioner of education, depending on how you utilize it, so it's at your fingertips.
Okay.
I just had a question on the calculation of the tax rate impacts, because, and you probably talked about this at the last meeting, so I might just be coming up to speed on this, but I mean, the numbers were much higher, you know, like with the version we saw maybe a month or so ago.
Adequacy, the adequacy change?
Adequacy.
The state money was revealed.
Okay, so the state increased the money to these three communities, particularly for Madbury and Levi a substantial amount, am I correct in that?
Correct.
Now, is the assumption that they are going to spend all of that money on tax reduction?
That's the way the state set it up, is that goes to the towns.
I understand that, but I mean, if I was in the town and I spent it all on tax reduction, knowing I only had two years of it, then I could be stuck the third year, and so I could, I could decide that I'm going to go, maybe do a quarter of it or something, and spread it out, so I'm not, you know, now, so we don't know then how they're going to spend.
We don't.
So we're, I'm just, you know, it's a reasonable assumption, I'm just trying to think, we're assuming that they're going to take it all and use it for tax reduction.
Absolutely, that's the assumption Sue and I are working under, and if we use the board's goal of 3.5%, a year ago, we were predicting the impact on the town of Lee was going to be $1.92.
Yeah.
The reality is it came in at 92, and here we are, predicting a year again in advance, and the fact that Lee is the big winner in terms of the state funneling money towards the towns, it's, we're predicting at this point, it's 8 cents. So, you know, we could predict probably it's nothing, you know, a year from now, or less than nothing.
Because they're going to get more, more, I think.
Yeah, but the danger that you point out, Tom, is exactly the danger that exists, because, you know, in 2122, that whole thing could swing way up, if the state doesn't put the same amount of money into the coffer as they did this year, and they've said, don't go to the bank on it, because it was a two-year supplement, and so right now, you know, Lee really looks great, but, you know, two years from now, it could be right back to $1.92 or worse.
Okay, yeah. Because somewhere you'd have to make up that 700,000, or whatever they got from.
Yeah, I mean, if they were wise, honestly, after the capital improvement talk we just had, you could take this windfall and take a chunk of it into your capital improvement.
Right, exactly.
But I don't live in Lee, so, yeah, I mean, that's a tactic.
But that would be the best thing to do, really.
But I mean, everybody would do that, if they think about it, in order to buffer any immediate loss, and I know, for example, the town of Lee took $300,000 from their reserve account, along with the $300,000 we put out, along with 125,000 additional state revenue, and that's how come that 1.92 dropped to 92. So Lee is very cognizant of how to use their money, so it's very likely that they will say, you know, that's all well and good, but, you know, we know it's going to come back and bite us, and they'll put money into their capital account. You know, all three towns actually do a pretty good job of that, so what we're predicting is if they used it all against school taxes.
Right. That's the assumption, okay.
If you choose option one, that's exactly what you're doing. By choosing option one, that's what you're doing.
I, well, I don't get it really.
Well, because your extra money is.
Are you orange, are you in orange?
I'm on the white.
Because I'm looking at orange.
Well, if you look at orange, just look at those totals there, you can see that Lee, we're going to receive 421,277 more in adequacy funding for Lee, and we're going to receive 237, 411 in Madbury. So that, in itself, is going to offset the rate, because remember, as Tom said, the last time he was here, the rate was much higher, that has offset those rates, brought those down.
Yeah, wasn't like Madbury, they were in the negative last budget, weren't they?
Yeah.
Right, but before we applied those additional fundings, I can't remember when that was, but.
But Madbury did the same, while she's looking it up, Madbury did the same thing that Durham or Lee would do, that what they did was, it went down, they used it to, you know, offset municipal expenses, so they raised, I can't remember, like $150,000 towards the library, maybe it was $250,000, because the school section was so low in comparison to what it had been, so they just used it for municipal purposes.
Lee was at 80 cents, and Madbury was at $1.15, before you got the additional adequacy money. So that additional adequacy money is, if you leave your budget the same, is being, offsetting the tax rate, that's what you're doing.
But that's the only, that's the only assumption we can make.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
You just pass the money to the town.
No, we get the money, it comes to us, it comes to us directly, and we use it to offset the tax rate, that's what we're doing in option one.
In option one?
It's our money, yes, it's our school funding.
So, option one, I mean, because I'm trying to get the one, is, sort of puts us in the best place if the bond didn't pass, so would that be option one?
Option one, yes.
Yeah, that would be option.
The only thing that it goes back to is if you go back to your original goal, if you go with option one, if the bond does pass, you've exceeded your goal.
Right, because it's the, right.
But if you take advantage of the additional adequacy money this year, you can do that and still keep your tax rate at a lower rate.
Right, exactly.
So that's essentially what you're doing.
Right, because the tax rate will still be, yeah, because of that.
It helped you bring your rate down, right.
So in a way, that's not a bad thing to do, like, we're kind of, we're kind of doing what we're saying the towns should do, and, you know, by doing it that way, I guess.
So the increased adequacy comes, the towns don't have discretion about how to use that?
No.
Okay, so that has to be applied to the tax rate?
Well, we have, we could increase our budget to use it, but it does go towards, it goes towards your revenues, individually to each town, it's not a shared revenue, so it's broken down, it goes individually, you see Durham didn't, Durham lost money, actually, Durham didn't benefit from that, but Lee and Madbury both did. And the way you could offset that is if you increased your budget to utilize some of that.
Mm-hmm.
But you choose, if you keep your budget as it is, it's not, you're not using it, you're just using it to offset your tax rates.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, but it sounds like option one really is, yeah, and we could, even if we go with option one and the bond passes, again, getting back to the fund balance, if we have money in the fund balance that we weren't anticipating, we could give that back to the taxpayer, and again, that would lower, you know, so we, we would give us that flexibility.
Yeah, okay.
The only difficulty is, one, as I see it, is we've been saying 3.5%, we're going to hold it to 3.5%, we've said that a million times.
Yeah.
And this raises it.
But not down, but not if you look at the tax impact, that's, I know, I know, but I'm just saying that.
I'm saying, in terms of the, in terms of what we've said.
Right.
This is, this is out of line with what we've said.
Unless we, unless we do this, unless we say that if the bond passes, then we'll go ahead and, you know, give any additional funds in terms of the fund balance and return that, and then that will lower that 4.1, it will bring it back down to 3.5.
A year from now.
Right, a year from now.
Difficult thing to explain.
Yeah.
It is, but, again, I'm just hedging, I just feel like, you know, to kind of hedge our bets against the possibility of the bond not passing.
Okay.
So Ken's given us additional homework, is there any additional information the board needs to make a decision?
Were you saying you're going to look at a second year, what a second year would look like?
I'll do, we'll do all five years, just remember, just like the long-range planning committee enrollment numbers, the further you go out, the less accurate that sheet is, which is why Jim always calls it a living document, so we know next year, based on the recommendations we've made, exactly what it will be, as we start pushing it out, and we push other things off, it just becomes more tenuous in terms of what decision you'll make in that given year.
So, so the decision we have to make is one, which one of these three options, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and we need to make that decision by the next meeting, is that?
Ideally, it would be the next meeting, then Sue has plenty of time to prepare, because it is a big document to get ready, you know, for deliberative and so forth. Do you want to, do you want to, so next meeting would be ideal, do you want to look at the warrant language?
Sure.
Tonight?
So just so you know, the amounts weren't revised, I don't think you have the copy, you have the 49, it's now we have to put that guaranteed maximum number in there?
It's 49.
I have 862, but I have to go, there were a couple different numbers.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Whatever it is on.
So it's 49, 8.
Something.
Yeah.
And then.
So the article three has got to be the bond, we know that from previous conversations. Sue, did you get to a default? That was the question.
Um, yes, you have a default.
Yeah.
You have a draft default. You had a copy in your packet, correct?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Default was 48, 221, 487, it's 417,620 less than your proposed budget.
Say it again?
417, 620 is the difference between.
417, 620.
Is the difference.
And that would reflect what, Sue?
Well, if you look at the default budget, the pluses.
The non-union, uh, non-union.
Pluses and minuses, so all of the health insurance for union is in there, all of the union increases are in there, remember, the teacher contract's not in there, so the teacher salaries are flat, anyone that's not in CBA would be flat, we pulled out the
If the teacher contract passes, but the budget fails, what happens then? Teacher's money has been approved by the voters.
Right, goes back, it goes in.
So it goes back in, so you're saying right now, the 600 and some odd thousand dollars for the teachers is part in default?
It's not in default, no, it's not in default.
Good, okay, sorry.
No, it's not in default.
So the difference is what?
417, 620.
Is the difference.
And that's, the default is just defined for us, really, it's very legal.
Right, it's pluses and minuses.
Right.
And you can see it on the sheet, we've gone down through each individual account to show the differences. Any other questions on default?
No, it's a relatively modest amount, because we're, we put all of our money in the bond basket.
Right, there isn't much in there.
So there's very little discretionary from this budget to the next budget.
So basically, we have the guaranteed maximum for warrant for the three.
Yeah.
And we just need, we have the default budget, right?
And then actually, we need to put in the five years of the teacher salaries, too, I realized we didn't have those, we know those are.
So the only number we're lacking essentially is the budget, is it, are we lacking any?
We just need the budget number.
Okay. And that's what we need to decide next meeting, or try to.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Is there any additional information that the administration can provide the board?
Questions?
Just, I don't know, the Madbury people, do you know if there are any special warrants that will be up on your towns this year?
They did the library last year, and that was raised through taxation and gifts, so I would imagine that the Madbury selectmen are going to focus in on the municipal side of the budget. So I think, there's no, there's no big building project, the only project that we know in small letters is in, are Lee, and it's related to the town center, but I don't know that that's been formalized yet, but we're just anticipating it.
I haven't, I haven't sure what it's going to be on the warrant yet.
Yeah, they're not even.
It's going to be something, but a much smaller version.
Durham will have a warrant articles with some change in the town charter, but nothing with expenditures either, not like our police station or things like that.
Right, so your big issue is fire station somewhere near you, right?
Not that, it's just, it's just bringing. Not, not that, it's just, it's just bringing up-to-date kind of the town charter with policies. I think the, one big one is Durham had to go to voter bond for 1 million or more in a project, and I think that was last done like in the late 1980s.
Eighty-seven.
So, we're changing that based on inflation to, I think it's 2.1...
2.4.
2.4 million, we're raising that to, but those are, but there's nothing that's a direct expenditure that might compete with what we're doing.
So, I think the middle school, you know, at least in Madbury and Durham, has a pretty clean shot in terms of not competing with any town projects. And then, we'll find out, you know, what it is in Lee, and they make up their mind what they're doing. But, you know, they've been trying to get either a library or town center project now, almost since I've been here. So, it's not a surprise that they will have another proposal.
Because that was, that first year we went with the fields, I think, something that was on Lee's ballot, I think, maybe hurt our chances.
That was a major project, that was a whole town center.
Correct.
Drawed out a really strong community base.
So, the next budget, I'll looking, I'll be looking for approval of the revenue side of the budget, and then, we can finish the warrants up and be able to have them ready for you. Is there anything else, Sue, in terms of deadlines?
No, I think that's it.
Yep, set it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you all for being...
Thank you, everyone.
We have a com, com, we don't have...
We don't have public comments at work.
There's no, what? Good, I'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, thank you for your indulgence. And I, I want to bring your minds back to the, the success we had making the gym at the Mahermit School larger, for small money and big results, and the windows and lights at the two elementary schools. Well, in that spirit, I want to bring something else forward. Some years ago, Durham, quite a while ago, Durham had a really hot budget committee and a public works director. And we put in the business park where Goss Manufacturing is now. There is nothing between, you can't even see Goss unless you know where to look going east. You can't find it. Can't see it coming west. There's nothing between Goss and that water tower, between the bypass and the power line on the big sand dome. And that was our industrial park. We put millions of dollars into infrastructure for that. Some years ago, probably the best company in the southeast New Hampshire wanted to locate there. That would be their taxes now, which would help the other towns, because of the way we compute our school tax on assessed evaluation, and students would have been north of $1 million by now,